Right. Oh, Mike. Is this supposed to be on? This microphone? Oh, yeah, that's not me. Turn it off.
They're very nice. And they're very warm, too.
The board would like you on the screen during the meeting, so I'm going to project you. So just be on your best behavior.
Sure.
Lynn, you want to lead us in the pledge?
We will call this December 14th, 2020, regular session of the Carmel Clay School Board to order. Thank you all for joining us. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
All board members are present this evening.
Thank you. Lynn, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Lynn. As we approach the end of the first semester of these unprecedented times that started in March, when our teachers, administrators, and parents built the remote learning airplane in the sky to all the work in preparation for running two, or in some cases even three, programs this semester, and for what lies ahead as we wait to get the virus under control with safety protocols and a vaccine. Again, on behalf of the board, I want to thank our teachers, administrators, other staff, and all of our families. This week, I had the pleasure of reading a stack of kudo recognitions more than in the past, more than normal, submitted by parents and teachers thanking teachers, bus drivers, and administrators for all that they do for our students. On behalf of our CCS family, I also want to thank all of our first responders and medical professionals for what they do for all of us every day. I know this year has not been easy for anyone, but once again, please remember, we are better together, together we achieve, and we are the best at getting better. Thank you, everybody. First item on the agenda is Spotlight of Excellence, Board Member Recognition. If Lynn would please join me at the podium. Tonight, we're going to take the opportunity to recognize Lynn at her last board meeting and thank her for her service. We will start. We have some gifts for her, but first, I'm going to let some of the other board members make comments. We'll start with Pam.
Thank you. Hi, Lynn. I'm glad you won your election four years ago because it's been an honor to serve with you on the board. You have been a representative to the Parks Board for the past two years. You've been on the Policy Committee, and you've been our Board Secretary. You have a very analytical mind, and you can, we can always tell when you're listening, thinking, and analyzing information during a meeting. You've made some very good points during discussions, and because of your background, you have offered many beneficial suggestions regarding financial matters. You've been on the Policy Committee with me, which has enabled me to get to know you in a different setting. You're warm, a caring person, and you love your family very much. You've brought new perspectives to many of our current and new policies, which have been greatly appreciated. I'm going to be sorry to see you leave the board. You will be very missed.
Katie?
Yeah. Colleen, are you able to put that picture up? A little over four years ago, you and I made the sometimes what we thought was crazy decision to run for Carmel Clay School Board. It was such a wonderful pleasure to be able to campaign with you and to be what I call the class of 2020, where we were able to learn this job together. You've given through the years strong leadership through challenges and celebrations. You clearly thought out debate and decision-making, and you have a sustained vision for excellence for our district. We were so fortunate to have such a dedicated member leading. I want to thank you for your leadership, the commitment to our students and our community, and your support of our mission to continually improve the education system for our students. Our district is without a doubt better because we've had you on your team. I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the time that you've given, and I'm thankful that I've been able to serve with you.
Me? Okay. Then I also have a few words I'd like to share, and for many of those, it's really my gratitude. Thank you for leading with integrity, for putting children first when making decisions to move Carmel Clay Schools forward, and for practicing fiscal responsibility in all that you do. Thank you for being an active listener and for working with the four of us as a team, always seeking continuous improvement for our students and our staff. While serving on the school board, the district has accomplished many great things, but those things could not have happened without your steadfast leadership and your continuous individual contributions. Your perspectives and ideas have enhanced our conversations, and you have really challenged each of us to be better leaders. On behalf of the students, the faculty, our greater Carmel community, and myself, thank you so very much for your selfless, dedicated service to our schools. I feel blessed to have served alongside you at Carmel Clay Schools on the board, and you will be very much missed. I wish you the very, very best in all your future endeavors. You're very welcome.
Well, see, going last, I get to say ditto, ditto, ditto. Lynn, thank you very much. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. Like everybody said, your analytical approach to putting students first has been greatly appreciated, and I'm going to also quote. I got an email today from Michael Klitzinger, who's the Director of Carmel Parks Department. He was asking me, who's going to be our representative now that Lynn is leaving us? But I just want to say, a quote from him is, "Lynn was a great contributor to the Park Board and represented CCS and Carmel Clay community extremely well." So in a very succinct way, I think he summed up what everybody said. So we appreciate everything you've done. We will miss you. Before I present you with your exciting presence, which is the reason we all serve, the first one being a lifetime sports pass. Wow. Wow.
That's a little surprise.
The second one being an action of commendation signed by the scribbled me. And then we have really two more presents for you, which I will happily share with you, but Dr. Bearsford, would you like to say anything before I let Lynn speak?
Thank you, Dr. B.
So these are on behalf of the district. Thank you. And even though we have Corona, I'm going to give you a hug. And we'll let you have the podium.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your kind words, and the campaign was just like yesterday. I couldn't believe that four years have passed, and you can see that the accomplishments here are not my own, and it's truly team effort. So this was four years ago when me and Katie were doing the goblin, you know, Ghost and Goblin Run for Halloween, and we were campaigning for ourselves. You can see we were wearing our campaign shirts. So, yeah, that was four years ago. I couldn't believe it. Honored and humbled to be recognized for the spotlight on excellence. I couldn't have come to this spot without a community of people who have helped me along the way. First, I'm grateful for my family. They are the reason that I care about the community, and they are the motivation that I always believe I can have a bigger impact on the world. Especially grateful for being part of a great team who mentored and inspired me to always consider bigger, something bigger than myself. Mike, thank you for giving critical perspectives for issues coming to our attention. Katie, thank you for constantly emphasizing and connecting with the community. Pam, thank you for being the strict, yet kind teacher to scrutinize every document and every suggestion. Thank you, Leila, for sharing your long-term community service to help me grow. And thank you, Dr. B, for making firm and calm decisions during turbulent times. As I'm leaving the board, I won't forget I have been one of thousands of people who worked tirelessly day and night to make the district better. I'll remember, for example, that since November 17th, when the preferred redistricting plan was posted online, like my fellow board members, I have read a total of 758 comments, asked questions, and offered thoughts to address community concerns. I know not every decision pleases everyone, but I have taken the community's trust very seriously, and I believe our disagreement is because we have different approaches to what's best for our students. I believe that our district's continued excellence has depended upon people who believe and who are willing to care and help each other. I'm so grateful that I work closely in the district, and I will always be part of a community who cares. Thank you. Thank you all.
You want to take it? You can take it or leave it.
Thank you. Thank you for the thoughtful gift, and I'll keep it with me, especially when driving. Thanks.
Next, we will move to public comment. We have two speakers that would like to address the board this evening. The school board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporation business, and public comment may be limited. When you approach a podium, please state your name and address when you start your comments. Public comments shall be permitted only as indicated on the registration form. Comments may not contain any personal complaints against a student, employee, or school official. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light when your time is up. First speaker we have this evening is Kyle Young.
Thank you all. My name is Kyle Young, 9:40, Sable Run. You know, I hope these comments are not in vain here, quite honestly. I'm here in a final effort to dissuade you and request, please do not move Cherry Tree Elementary as a feeder school to Carmel Middle. Without getting too deep, I've spent the better part of four years taking numerous action to protect my kids from abusive acts. I have given up most of my wealth. I've given up most of my career, but the only issue in front of me, as well as you guys tonight, is the fact that I have done everything I could possibly do to get my kids in a stable environment, school being one of them. I took every prudent and logical action to try and put myself in a home, in a place where these kids would be, in a structured environment. I talked to principals, I talked to board members, and they all assured me you guys would not move the feeder system to the middle schools. Then, you guys had three scenarios put forth. You did not have any scenario that changed the feeder system, the middle schools. We get to the final and fourth option, where you guys come through, and we're here tonight, and it says, you know, magically, we have a fourth option, and we're going to switch 1,500 kids. Look, I'm just one guy, four kids. I know I'm just one among many here, but, you know, I've spent tens of thousands of dollars, and I've tried to protect my kids, and I'm just asking you guys to think about what you guys are doing, because I am not an accounted-for person in your grouping, right? I am the non-custodial parent, which means I have no say in anything, in any of your analytics you guys do, and there are other people like me who are not showing up in your numbers. And that's what I want you guys to think about. It's not just a straight, cut the pie here. There are people behind the scenes, and I've tried to get these people to voice their opinions to you guys. So I'll leave it with that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Kyle Moniki? Monk? Thank you.
Hi. So I'm Kyle Monk. I live at 3180 Driftwood Court. Ironically, I'm Kyle, and I'm here to talk to you about Cherry Tree Elementary and the feeder school for Carmel Middle. I've been involved from the very beginning, from being in a focus group to attending the first meeting here, and also the public forum that was at the high school. I find it very unfortunate that the number of students affected in this preferred plan was not taken into consideration. The 2,299 students is too many. I think Pam and Leila both mentioned that at the last board meeting when it was presented. There were lots of ideas that were thrown around, but this preferred plan was not one of the three scenarios, so of course, none of the Cherry Tree parents were even aware that this could be a possibility, and I find that unfortunate because I think you did have a lot of people that were involved and wanted to be involved in this from the beginning. It seems like switching the Forestale students and the Cherry Tree, which is what happened in the preferred plan, which was a little bit of a shocker to everyone, doesn't make any sense, and it seems to the general public that it was done to appease the Orchard Park students, who are now getting an option to attend whatever middle school they want anyways. So I would ask that you would switch Cherry Tree and Forestale back, keep it how it was in all three scenarios, and still allow the Orchard Park students to have a choice of which middle school to go to, whatever makes sense for them. And again, I hope this isn't in vain. I hope it's not too late. We've tried to email. We've sent recommendations. Everyone gave their feedback, but there was really no communication up until this point, even to the point that I asked Matt tonight if there had been any changes to the plan, and he said no. So I'm hopeful that this one switch could be made, less students would be affected, and I think everyone would be happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments as well. Thank you to both Kyles for their comments this evening. And as Lynn even said, we've received numerous comments, and we will address the report when we get to the report. Next item on the agenda is consent. On consent this evening, we are approving the personnel report, claims, payroll, closing budget functions, including authorizing the associate superintendent to make the necessary appropriation transfers as part of the year-end closing process. The overall budget amounts will be unchanged, but the associate superintendent will report back to the board for ratification at the January 25, 2021, meeting. Approval of gift applications, including a gift from the Home Depot Foundation Matching Gift Program, some gifts made, memorial gifts made to College Wood Elementary Media Center in memory of a former tutor, Grant Gibbs, a donation from New York Life Foundation, a donation from the Epsilon Mu Chapter of Kappa 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 to Creekside Middle School, and a donation of neoprene bags from Gentec to Carmel Schools. May I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Lynn, thank you. A second? Thank you, Pam. Any discussion on consent? No? All in favor of consent, please signify as by saying aye? Aye? Any opposed? No. Motion carries five to zero. But I do understand that Dr. Osterich has a couple of announcements he'd like to make from consent.
Thank you, President Kirschner, members of the board, Dr. Bearsford. I am extremely proud to announce Mrs. Teri Roberts Leonard as Carmel Clay Schools' first Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. Congratulations. Carmel Clay Schools received 109 applications from candidates all over the state and beyond for this important position. Mrs. Roberts Leonard earned a bachelor's degree in Communications with a minor in African-American Studies from the University of Cincinnati. She earned a master's of Education in Sports Administration from Xavier University and a master's degree in School Counseling from Morehead State University. Currently, Teri serves as the Director of Equity and Inclusion at Franklin College in Indiana until she transitions into this new role beginning on January 19, 2021. She also held positions in higher education at the University of Cincinnati, the University of Massachusetts Amherst, Morehead State University, and Ball State University. Mrs. Roberts Leonard is the recipient of a Champion of Diversity Award from the Indiana Minority Business Magazine. She has received the Center for Leadership Development Distinguished Achievement Award and is a WTLC Accentuate the Positive Contest winner. She also received an Ali V. Green Humanitarian Award for the Central Region of Sigma Gamma Rose Sorority on three separate occasions. She has also authored a children's book about a story of a main character who was adopted called Danda the Panda, Welcome to My World, and I'm hoping to get an autograph on this very soon. Mrs. Roberts Leonard will provide her expertise and leadership centered around diversity, equity, and inclusion across all areas of the school district. She will oversee the development of a systemic district-wide equity program that ensures high levels of learning and equity of opportunity for all CCS students. We are excited for Teri's future work with our district, and her expertise in diversity, equity, and inclusion will benefit all students and staff within Carmel Clay Schools. Please once again join me to welcome Mrs. Teri Roberts Leonard. And Teri, you are welcome to share a few words with us at the podium if you'd like.
Okay. I'm sure. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm very, very excited about the position, excited to get started. I am very humbled by you reading that. I'm like, is that me? But I'm just really thankful for the opportunity to serve. I'm about service and servant leadership, and so I'm really looking forward to bringing my skill set here and learning from you all, as well as you all learning from me. So thank you.
In addition to Teri being approved tonight on the consent agenda, we are also pleased to welcome Mrs. Angela Dillon as our new Assistant Director of Special Services. Angela will replace Maggie Merriman, who served with Carmel Clay Schools for more than 40 years. Mrs. Dillon earned her bachelor's degree from Fresno Pacific University in California, which is why she's not here right now, and also her master's degree from Fresno Pacific University in Curriculum and Educational Leadership. In addition, she has an Education Specialist Degree from Bradman University in Special Education. She is passionate about building relationships with her families and is looking forward to relocating to the Hoosier State. Mrs. Dillon served in her previous public school district for the past 14 years as both a teacher and district leader in the field of special education. She most recently served as the Director of Special Education in her California school district. She has made it a priority to provide regular communication and opportunities for students, parents, and staff to meet with special education leaders to provide feedback and input into the work that they performed as a department. Additionally, she has both developed and facilitated a variety of trainings for general and special education teachers, support providers, district leaders, and school administrators. We are excited for Angela Dillon's future work with Carmel Clay Schools, and she brings a wide array of experiences that will make her an asset within our Carmel Clay Schools community. Please welcome Mrs. Angela Dillon.
Well, thank you, Teri, and welcome to the Carmel Clay School family. We are all excited to have you onboard and are looking forward to all the great things that you're going to help us do. Also, on the consent agenda this evening under the personnel report, I want to share with the public, as provided in the contract between Carmel Clay Schools and the Superintendent, Dr. Michael Bearsford, the parties have agreed that their desire to enter into an agreement for continued employment of the superintendent, and as required by that contract, we will begin negotiations. Dr. Bearsford, I want to take this time to publicly thank you for your service and say that we look forward to keeping you here at Carmel Clay Schools under a new contract as long as the law will allow, you allow, and Mrs. B. will allow. If you have anything you'd like to say at this point, I will open it up to you.
Family, I'm just happy to be here, and I'm still the luckiest guy moving forward for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearsford. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. At this time, I will accept a motion to suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing regarding an additional appropriation of $1.9 million to the Education Fund and $3 million to the Rainy Day Fund. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Leila, second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. All in favor of suspending the meeting, please signify by saying aye? Aye? Thank you. The meeting is suspended. Mr. McMichael, before we see if there's any public comments, would you like to make a few comments regarding the additional appropriations in the Rainy Day Fund?
Yes. This notice of this hearing was advertised in the local newspapers on November 24. The purpose of the hearing is to provide opportunity for public input. This additional appropriation is simply giving the authority to spend the funds that we already have. So this has nothing to do with, you know, additional taxes or additional money. We have the funds, but the appropriation process gives us authority to actually spend the money. And so we will be on the education... And so we will be, on the education fund, those additional appropriations are necessary. That budget was built about a year and a half ago, and a number of things, as you can imagine, have changed since then. And then we're also in the midst of appropriating money in our rainy day fund, in part to cover expenses associated with the pandemic.
Thank you, Roger. At this time, we will offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding the additional appropriation for the education fund and the rainy day fund. Seeing that there are no members of the public that would like to make a comment during the public hearing, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second? Thank you, Leila. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. Next, we will move to action items. The first action item is approval of the redistricting proposal. Dr. Bearsford?
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. I'm now in the official ranks of quarantine. So I apologize for not being able to hear you. I have been exposed to the virus, but I'm not yet. Because I'm not able to, and now I have a lot in common with students and staff that have been quarantined as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to present this recommendation tonight. From the Bearsford faculty room, and I'll just get right to it. First, I wanted to spend a little time going through the purpose for redistricting, which is first and foremost, just to rebalance enrollments across the district. This is a common thing that happens in growing districts, where it can be sparked by openness or openness. In our case, it... Now, the board made the tough to close Orchard Park three years ago and build new place in our elementary in an area of growth in the district, far on the west side, that'll open this. And I also wanted to get the word out that we have a public tree of Orchard Park Elementary in the spring to celebrate the rich and wonderful history of Orchard Park. We also have a new Carmel Elementary School on its current campus in August. Now, this will bring all 11 of our elementary schools up to similar sizes. And we did that to meet our curriculum. It will also spread to other schools that are currently really concentrated on the east side. Now, balance is essential through crowding at West Clay Elementary and Collegewood Elementary, as well as increase some of our underutilized schools. This is all necessary in our district efficiently and equitably possible. Now, one thing we're all to have is that all of our schools perform at a very high level, and our communities absolutely love their schools. That's what makes such a difficult process. It has many, many layers. And I've been pleased with the progress. Appreciate the hard work of Mr. McMichael and his team, as well as Matt Sacks and the Cooperative Strategies team. Matt, he plays the power of the G and technology and experience in redistricting, you know, hundreds of districts across the nation. While we have Roger providing background knowledge and the understanding of the history and culture of our community. And those two working together really puts together a robust team to do the best job possible. One thing I'm really proud of is that we had close to 4,000 parents and community members engaged in this process. It's been very transparent and clearly communicated. And the process began in focus groups, 14 of them, that led to the three preliminary plans, each plan kind of emphasizing different options. Then, all that feedback, you know, those plans were focused, and all this feedback was gathered, both online and in public meetings. And then they took those, that feedback from both, and it lead to the preferred plan that we're recommending tonight. We just had outstanding in every phase of the project in our community. And there were changes made based on that feedback, leading to this recommendation tonight. So, want to go back. I apologize for the... It's important to know that we have redistricting criteria going into this. And we knew, as we wrote the criteria down, that these criteria were going to... Wrestling with the criteria is a normal and necessary part of the work to get to the best plan. So when we say students will be assigned to their closest school, we knew before we even said that, and I know Mr. McMichael said it over and over again, if we, if it's solely, you know, closest to school, we'd have grossly inadequate schools. At the same time, we want schools to be balanced. And we also want to not only use our hard numbers that we have right now, but take into consideration a demographic study of what the projections and forecasts are in the future. Keeping neighborhoods and subdivisions intact. And then finally, entire elementary schools transitioning together to the same middle school. We believe that the preferred plan best satisfies the criteria to the greatest extent possible. That sentence is up there first on the slide and all along the way. Because the key was trying to piece the pieces together, the criteria together, to find what is, what is the greatest extent possible, meaning there's needs. Now, you may notice, there's nothing mentioned in the criteria about resources, services, or special programs. And there were some concerns about that, some of the comments from the community. And that's because the resource sources, the services, all follow the student. Our support, our special programs, as normal. Moving on to the next slide. Here are some of the benefits from the preferred plan. Now, with the number of students in the boundary to their closest school, as far as that criteria goes, 81% of the students in the new Cherry Tree boundary are closer to Clay Middle School. 57% of students in the new Forestale boundary are closer to Carmel Middle. In the elementary, currently, 50.7% are closest to their school. With the preferred plan, it moves up to 65.4, and the middle schools, it went from 83.9 to 85.6. A large portion of the Orchard Park boundary still remains in the Carmel Middle School boundary. As far as more balanced utilization, this plan eliminates overcrowded West Clay and Collegewood. It increases utilization at Woodbrook. Woodbrooks currently runs at 62%, and West Place running at 109%. Bird Plan at 76%, and Town Meadow at 90%, Smoky Rose, that's the range. All elementary, does this plan feed 100% in the middle schools? And here's some of the exceptions to the plan. Next year's fifth graders will be allowed to finish school. Next year's seventh grade will be allowed to finish school. We typically call it... One of the difficult, this transit, Orchard Park kids, they don't have a school being closed, so they don't have a place to go, like their grandfather, because they can't stay there. So next year's fifth grade from Orchard Park will be allowed to choose schools that Orchard Park is being redistricted to. So that gives them a choice of Carmel Elementary, Clay Center Elementary, Forestale, Town Meadow, and Woodbrook. Students from Clay Center Elementary, as an update, the original preferred plan, has to give all students from Clay Center Elementary a choice enrollment to Carmel Middle School, and also to give all students from Cherry Tree a choice enrollment to Carmel. Now, for all these exceptions, the last tricks on the fine print, transportation is not... So, with this plan, we will move a maximum of 1,505 students. Over is the students from Orchard Park. And we'll also move max 760 middle school students, a total of 2,999. Now, the reason I say maximum is because this does not account for grandfathered students or choice students, and I'll go into more detail on that as we go. Now, we'll talk a little bit about feedback. Now, since both the preferred plan, we receive feedback in primarily two areas. One was request shift boundaries, and the other one were concerns about the middle school capacity, primarily at Clay Middle School. We'll start with the shifting boundaries part of this. And we receive several requests, now neighborhoods to move to current schools. I know you guys from the board have seen those emails and submissions. Many of our parents have generously offered options and plans of sending their other neighborhood to other schools to take their place. Now, this is normal, because change is hard. But we do want to point out that redistricting is a very delicate and interrelated process. Every action that is taken, there's a reaction, a domino. So a change here will require a change somewhere else. You know, Mr. McMichael and his team went through the process and were trying to get a piece of feedback. They could go back and it's a natural tendency to say, why don't you, what if you move this line over there? What if you move that line over there? And we can move a line anywhere. But when you move that line there, then that affects the other boundary on the other side, and that other boundary on the other side. And before long, the dominos start falling, and it gets all out of whack. So, you know, that's an important piece. Roger and Matt have run down almost a scenario that's been wanted to come to this preferred plan. They came to a preferred plan based on feedback throughout the process, and they made changes based on that feedback and feedback from the board. All of this is to say that we are not making any updates to the preferred plan boundaries we presented last board meeting. And we just don't, we didn't receive any feedback that we thought was just over the edge to make a change. The second graded area of feedback was related to concerns about the capacity of Clay Middle, which was noted at a 100% of capacity at the previous presentation. And I'd like to take minutes to share a bit of information. Now, there are basic options to finance middle school enrollments. One is split elementary school, with part of the school attending one middle school or another part of the elementary school attending a different school. Or through the second option, which is called choice. Now, we do not recommend splitting elementary schools to balance middle schools, and this is why. It's actually why we're moving all the elementary schools together to the middle school as one of our guiding principles or one guiding criteria. The reason behind this thought is based on educational research on transitions. There's a lot of research on transitions from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. And to kind of put it off in a group, students in elementary school move from a homeroom teacher to one primary teacher. And then they move to a specials teacher. You know, one specials teacher, so they're really primarily working with maybe two teachers a day. So when they, when they have that little small, and then they move to a middle school. In a middle school, they're going to have eight teachers each day, and that can make this transition difficult. That's why our transition activity is to reduce that stress and make our sixth graders feel so welcome. Now, one of the complications of making that transition is that a class of fifth and elementary go together. With peer exception, friends, one of the stress points for middle schoolers, traveling together, that stresses immensely. Now, like I shared at the past meeting, students are resilient. If they make that transition, they will address and be comfortable in a new environment. But for those who struggle, having that friend from elementary school can make a big difference. So that's why we recommend splitting the elementary schools to balance the middle schools. Now, the second, the second way to balance schools would be to operate... And I want to take just a few minutes just to look at the numbers. Now, what you're looking at here is the number of students that are currently enrolled. And if you took our current old students and then just rolled that year after year, you know, as the kids matriculate through elementary school, this is what our numbers would look like. First thing I want to point out, that the capacity of all three middle schools is 1,400. And when you look at this, in the hard numbers, the 2021 year is this school year. So that 1,48 that is distressful to a lot of folks, 102% of the capacity, will never exist. So really, we want to start looking at the 2122 school year and move from there. Now, if you look down at the numbers, these hard numbers, you'll find that none of the schools using the students that are currently in the pipeline right now will be over that 1,400. Really, there's probably more Carmel Middle Schools below, down there in the last two decades. So, look at these numbers. They're good. But you have to remember that one of our criteria we looked at was to look at what the demographic study, and what would that effect have. So we'll move to another slide. Let's see. There we go. Now, this slide shows the students currently enrolled and the forecasted populations as well. So this is kind of a double, a double edge to this first column for Carmel Middle's hard numbers that were on the last. And the second is the forecast of growth, and that comes from our demographer. So just a, patience before I did two, about just demographics in general. District forecasts by demographers are very accurate for at least five years. If you get to 10 years, I don't know, because as time changes, you know, as the farther you get along, the less accurate they get. I'm watching Matt shaking his head or nodding his head, because he does a lot of this type of... The smaller the, such as a school boundary, the less accurate the forecast. And that's mostly because of growth or decline in a small, has a bigger impact. An example, I have a neighborhood that, little boundary, land that they, apartment complex on. And they build that in two years, third year, that demographic study might be far off if that was going to happen. By the same, they find a, I call it the group in the neighborhood where the kids have moved out, and they matriculate through the, and the parents don't move, stay there. And before long, you see diminishing numbers of students coming from that neighborhood. So I always like to put a little asterisk, forecast of growth, so it could be lower, it could be lower. But in general, it's more accurate than it is at the end. could be lower, but in general, it's more accurate than it is at the end. So, based on the numbers, you'll see that Clay has over 1,400 students for each of the next five years. Creekside tips over the 1,400 mark by 50 kids in the fifth year. So, the question to me is probably, what would the administration recommend this plan? And the answer to that, we have no concern about the ability to accommodate these enrollments at intermediate schools. Let me explain. An elementary set, one primary teacher, and then the three special teachers. And our current elementary, about 13, 30 classrooms, middle schools between 65 and 70, and they go by, they can spread kids out, open the building, and 4,500 classrooms per period. And I say 4,500 because there's prep periods being scheduled so that teachers can work in their rooms during prep periods, so there's, there's empty class periods each period. So, the range of the numbers of students over 1,400, Clay Middle School, it ranges from 19 kids that first year, to as high as 900 over on the, that fourth year. And so, even with that range, we could easily accommodate those numbers. 100 students over is two, two students per class if you split out across the building. These scenarios also don't reflect grandfather choice. That's why we're grandfathering expanding choice to Clay Center and the Cherry Tree. And as you can see at the bottom, the number is at Carmel Middle School, 1321, Clay's at 1313, and Creekside is at 12. I want to talk just about choice, and that choice can offer positive weight to enrollments or under those magic 1,400 number. While we know that we can accommodate the class, but at the same time, that will do nothing but help. One other good thing about it, that we can control enrollment by remaining flexible to expand it or reduce it as needed. Choice accommodates families, and it also has the advantage of balancing school populations. So, it's a nice, balanced population, we can remain flexible to reduce as if we find some overcrowding. And then, what we're recommending for the plan is that after five, evaluate, you know, our current choice enrollment and see how the balance is actually played out. This is a random number of students to matriculate through, and who started in elementary and worked their way up to middle school. And in closing it out, I always go back to the guide, and throughout this process, I believe we've kept, of every decision, because we sought very non-threatening environments and addressed the academic, emotional, physical needs of our students. We did so by providing economic facilities with our two new elementary schools, and by reducing overcrowding in our schools, and also the unemployment of others. Throughout this process, we had made communications, our parent community involvement priority with thousands who are engaged, 14 focus groups, 3,069, and through a community. And since posted the prepared plan, we had responses to, and we're running right about 50 people of the plan. What's unique, typically don't get a lot, and people that are happy about it. We sought to keep it efficient and be responsible. So, to that end, we need the preferred plan with the expanded choice option for tonight. And we're now ready to take any questions, but that concludes the presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearsford. May I have a motion to approve the redistricting proposal?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Katie. I know it goes without saying, any discussion, I know there will be discussion. Dr. Bearsford, we understand the circumstance, we appreciate how good technology is, though it's not perfect. I know at some point, you were breaking up and it was hard to hear you, so I apologize if we ask questions that you already covered. I just think it's important to point out that while the map has not changed, there are two new changes to the proposal as was presented last month, I mean, last month, at the last meeting, those being that students from Clay Center Elementary will have choice enrollment to Carmel Middle School, and second, students from Cherry Tree Elementary will have choice enrollment to Carmel Middle School. And I just want to clarify that those are choices for a five-year period, after which and during which, we will evaluate the process if this proposal is approved by the board. So, I will next move to questions from the board. I will start with Lynn.
I think that I have asked a lot of questions and offer thoughts through board emails, and I just want to say that I'm pleased to see that we found a solution to address the overcapacity at Clay, at Clay Middle and at Creekside. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila?
Dr. Bearsford, I actually am pleased with these additional choices. What I'd like to better understand is transportation. Could you touch on what that looks like, what the potential is for transportation? How does this choice impact families with regards to transportation? Because you had said it is not guaranteed. Talk me through that, please.
Leila, I'm having a real, I'm hearing you. No, no.
Okay, I'll try again. Can you hear me any better?
Yes, that's much better, thank you.
Okay. Can you talk me through the transportation possibility for those who will exercise their choice to attend a different middle school?
Got it, thank you. At this point in time, we can't guarantee transportation because we have no idea what the numbers are going to be for choice and also for grandfathering. The plan from the district would be to do a survey immediately after the decision was made, probably after the break, and then we would look at that data and see what the opportunities would be to offer some transportation. If I'm breaking up, I know Roger can respond to this as well.
Yes, excuse me, I would add that, as Dr. Bearsford said, once we get the information of the survey and know how many students would either require transportation in order to stay at their school of choice or would prefer it, as well as those that may have made carpool and may already not utilize our transportation system. So, once we get that information, then we will look at it. One of the things we're talking about is, is we, is whether or not we can provide any type of transportation, even if it's not, you know, a normal transportation. Our board policy, for example, provides for up to one-half mile to a bus stop. I don't know if we have any bus stops that are a mile and a half, but most of them are more like two houses away. And, but as we look at this, our goal would be to provide transportation and to provide the best that we possibly could. And if that, if that goes to the point that it's not as, as good as it is now, but it may be better than none at all. And we know we can provide certain students transportation because there are students, of course, that live right across the line from another district. And so, they could, they could literally walk across the street and catch a bus to the school that they want to go to. And then there are others that are just the opposite, they're at the far extreme, and of course, those will be more difficult. We're always, will be working within two constraints. One is particularly on the secondary routes, because they're, we, as you know, our elementary students start first, so that we have time from the time we drop off the elementary students, but we have to pick up the secondary students and have them to school on time. So, there's a timeframe, maximum time that we have. And then we also have the capacity on the bus. And so, when the bus is either full or out of time to get to school, then, then we go to school. So, we're anxious to get this information to see, and we will do our very best to offer transportation if we possibly can. The underlying problem is, is we already have a critical shortage of bus drivers, and which is why in the past, when we grandfathered fifth graders, for example, we, we did guarantee transportation, and we had the resources to do that. So, that's the underlying issue.
So, what I hear you saying is, after the first of the year, a survey will be going out to families?
Yes.
And once you have the data from the surveys, you will assess the possibility of providing transportation?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Leila?
Well, actually, can I just read a couple things? It's not necessarily a question, but just a basically thank you, or do you want?
That's, that's fine. I just want to come back to, to transportation. You know, you said crossing streets. Obviously, we would never put somebody, a student crossing a major street, so safety would be obviously the first consideration. And then, if a, if a neighborhood or a street had more people that chose choice, that might make it more likely that transportation would work. And then I believe, you may have already said, so that the survey will be, I will, would like to go if there's transportation, or I will go no matter what, if there's not, if there's transportation or not transportation?
Yes, I'm really thinking three, three possibilities. One is, is that the parent says, "I will not need transportation because I intend to drive my child to school." And so, then the second will be, "I would really prefer transportation, but I intend to go one way, you know, regardless." And then the third category would be the parent that says, "I want to go to this school, but I require transportation. I have no way to get my child to school." And so, there's likely be some form of those questions.
Thank you. Leila, do you want to save your thank yous for the end? That's fine. Lynn, we'll just go this way. Katie, you have questions?
Yeah. Dr. Bearsford or Mr. McMichael, can you talk a little bit about the input you had from school administrators? I know, Dr. Bearsford, you've talked before about how with the middle school capacity that you've worked with each of the principals at each of the middle schools, and you've talked about this with them. Can you touch on that? And can you also talk about the fact about how certain schools, particularly Carmel Middle School utilizes specific classrooms for special education, and that these numbers that you showed do not represent students who may be boundary to a different school, but who are, go to, who may go to ones, who are boundary to a school, but may attend a different school because of special programming?
Roger, why don't you keep, since I've got like a big echo, something going on here.
Okay, so, you're correct, we did consult with our middle school principals, starting with Carmel Middle School. And as you alluded to, Carmel Middle School has all of our special needs program. Now, the other, I don't mean that the other two schools don't have them, but Carmel Middle School has every exceptionality that we have for special education. And, yes, and it all, Carmel Middle School has all the special ed programming. The other schools have programming, but, but it's just that Carmel has every, every exceptionality that we have. And they also have, they're one of two sites that have our childcare, our educaire program. And so, in terms of use of the building and capacity, we would make it clear, as Dr. Bearsford said, when he talked about two students per classroom, he's not, he's not suggesting that if the school was overcrowded, that there would be two more students in each classroom where the class size would be higher. Just trying to point out that you're spreading, in a middle school, you're spreading the students throughout the entire school. So, we did talk to the, to the principals about the capacity, and as well as the idea of splitting the schools. And our principals felt, as we do, very strongly that it's not in the best interest of children to, to split the elementary schools going into the middle schools. And I think, I'm not sure, what was your second question?
I would.
Go ahead, Dr. B.
Yeah, I would just, you know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I would just tack that, the, am I breaking up again?
You're good.
Okay, I would just tack that, you know, when, way before Creekside was opened, I believe there was over 1,600 kids in Clay Middle School and Carmel Middle. Now, we wouldn't want to go up that high, but we know that that can be accommodated. One of the questions we had was about how will grandfather play into the, and the choice, and, you know, I think it's so interrelated, so we see who, who wants to grandfather, it'll be hard to tell, but guess would be, at least break even and might even work out more of a balanced setting.
Thank you. My next question.
Roger, can you just maybe clarify a little bit about, I know Dr. Bearsford said something about the classrooms, how they're different at the middle school than the elementary, and when you add 100 kids to a middle school, how that's different than adding 100 kids to an elementary school?
Well, in the middle school, the students are, are spread out much more across the building and across different courses. In an elementary school, capacity is one thing, but it depends on what grade level the children are in. So, you could have a school that's maybe under capacity, but have a very large fifth grade, for example. And so, so the total number of students in a grade level can affect the class size, and much more so in an elementary school than, than in a middle school. Secondly, the programming in a, in a middle school is such that, as, as you know, the, all of our teachers have preparation periods. And so, in a middle school, when, when the teacher is having a prep period, the majority of the teachers are, remain in their classroom. And so, at any given time, there's, there's a certain number of classrooms that, that are occupied only by the teacher because that's, they're doing their prep. And then, at, at our middle schools, there's also a team prep. And so, with the size of the school being, you know, twice the size of, of our elementary schools, and the, and the differences in the programming, and the, and the students moving from multiple teachers as opposed to one, you know, one grade level teacher, it makes the, the distribution of the students a lot easier, and, and you do have more, more flexibility or room relative to, to capacity in the building.
Thank you, Roger. I apologize, Katie, for interrupting. Go ahead with your next question.
The five-year choice plan, can families change their minds and how often?
We hadn't discussed that, but I would feel like there, it wouldn't seem to be an issue with us, as long as we know, part of when we do the survey, aside from transportation, we also need to know what students are going to what school, so that they, they need that to do the scheduling process.
And then also, I believe Dr. Bearsford touched on this, but I think he was cutting out a little bit. We've had a lot of feedback regarding Title I funds. Maybe this is a question for you, Dr. Dudley. Can you please talk about having more than one Title I elementary in a middle school, and if that affects the programming that children will receive?
Yes, so currently, we serve, three of our Title I schools are elementary schools. We do not serve Title I in any of our middle schools. But as Dr. B. said, the programming follows the students. So, once we have the redistricting done, we'll look at where are our highest needs and what schools, and determine what are the Title I schools. But it will follow the, the students. But currently, we do not service Title I schools in any of our middle schools right now.
Thank you. I have a statement, but we can do that toward the end after questions, too.
too.
Thank you. Pam, any questions, please?
First of all, the charts that you showed us today, you talked about a demographer. And when was that demographer hired to do this study? This, is this part of the old demographic study, or a new demographic study?
The information presented this evening is new. We asked for that so that we would have the most current information relative to the recommendation that we're making.
Okay, so as the demographic study was done, does this show just the middle schools, or does this talk about the schools that are feeding into the middle schools as well?
It, the, we have the information on all the schools, including the elementary schools.
So we know the sizes of the various schools, elementary schools, as well as the middle schools?
That's correct.
Okay. For the transitioning to middle school, because we're giving students choice, and we're also doing grandfathering, how are we going to handle all of the transitioning that may happen for students who choose and may not actually, maybe going to a different school than their classmates?
So, I'm going to move over here. So when we do the transitioning, once we know where the students are going, we will do that transitioning in a variety of ways. So for example, at our middle school, our middle school principals will have a variety of different activities for the students. And so we may have some students, like for example, at Orchard Park, we may have all three principals go and visit Orchard Park, because those students may be going to three different middle schools. They'll have the opportunity to ask questions. We've talked about possibly having students not visit the schools. In previous years, we would have students come and visit the schools. But because we're in the middle of a pandemic, we may have students on Zoom, and then the elementary students will be able to ask the middle school students questions about their school. But they'll have the opportunity to do that regardless of what middle school they might be going to, or regardless of what elementary school they may be transitioning to. At the elementary school, we'll have our students actually go to the new school to visit, and to have a tour. And if there are students that are choosing to go to that elementary school, we'll make sure that they're included in that. So that's why it's so important, once the redistricting decision is made, that we send out the surveys to the parents, and the parents make the decision. So we make sure we can include them in those transitioning activities.
Okay, so once, I know that all of this is happening this year, but we're also giving students choice for five years. So will we be doing a survey each year in order to determine how many students will be going to the different buildings, and then also doing the same transitioning that you just discussed?
I would anticipate we wouldn't do a survey, per se, but we would provide information to parents, and make it clear that we need for them to declare, if they're choosing, if they're electing one of the choices, that we would have that information by a certain time.
That you would have what?
Well, that we, they would declare, if they were going to choose, for example, to go to Carmel Middle School, that they, each year, we would ask the parents to make that decision and tell us at, by a date certain, so that, again, so that we would have the information relative for transportation purposes, as well as scheduling.
Okay. And then the other question is, for this choice, what if the student, the parents who have a student who's making the choice this year, has a sibling coming up, and that would be within the next five years? Are we going to ask now about siblings possibly coming up, or is that going to be later on as?
That would be later, whatever year it was, they would actually be coming to that school. So we're not going to ask the parent to tell us, you know, two or three years ahead of time. They would, they would not need to make the choice two or three years ahead of time. They would just make it for the upcoming year.
Okay. Those are my questions, and I just have some general comments. Thanks.
Okay, I have a few questions myself. And, and the first one is really just clarification based upon all the comments that we've received today. I wanted, I guess I want to confirm, and I know the answer to this, that out of the three preliminary plans, at no point did we ever say that one of those would be the preferred plan. And actually, that plan, those plans all changed based upon feedback that we got after those discussions and events that were had. So I know we've had a lot of people feel that changes that came about, and mostly with the balancing, rebalancing of the middle schools, was a blind side, and not really part of the public proposal.
Yeah, when, every time that we presented the, in any meetings that we had, the original three scenarios, we actually emphasized that the, that the final plan would not likely be any one of these three, number one. Secondly, as has been stated several times, we invited public input, and did everything we thought we could to make that easy for parents to comment, both online as well as in person. And, and then we considered that input. And, and had we selected one of the three scenarios, I suspect that there would be parents felt like, that it was a done deal, if you will, and that, that we really didn't consider any public input. On the other hand, when we, we did consider the public input, and as can be seen, we did make changes. And we understood that the, the change of the two elementary school was a big change, if, you know, to the extent that you attend either one of those schools. But we also thought that it was consistent with the criteria had been approved by the board. Now, I had at least one parent say, well, why didn't you think about this before? And, and I don't have a good answer to that. We simply didn't. And from my experience, there are some times when you're working very closely with something, it's kind of that you can't see the forest for the trees, and then somebody sees it from a distance, and, and they, they bring that issue up. And that's, that's exactly what happened. And so we either would have needed to disregard that information, or include it in our considerations. And so we, we chose to consider it.
Thank you, Roger. And I understand we don't anticipate any issues. I understand choice will be subject to space allowance. And since we don't anticipate that being a problem, in the event that we have more people that want to exercise choice than we would expect, and that results in some unbalancing, at that point, we'll have to come up with a way to allow who gets choice, and how we don't overcrowd or undercrowd a specific school. Is that, I see Dr. Beresford nodding his head, so I'll take that as a yes. And then the last question I have, and I guess it's not really a question. We currently and always have a case-by-case basis for special circumstances, which, if for any specific reason a student needs to go to a school that's not within their boundaries, we talk about special ed and those things, those exceptions are not being eliminated. It's just not an automatic you need to apply, apply is probably not the right word, but I see heads nodding, so I'll let either Dr. Dudley or Mr. McMichael answer.
You're correct. We have a, a process for any parent to request consideration to, to go to a school outside of their district, or in this case, it might be more likely that they would request that they not be required to move. And, and, but as you said, that there would need to be specific reason other than they just don't want to change schools. And, and there are a lot of reasons. And we have, we have had, certainly have approved those over the years. And as you said, that, that practice will not change.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the board? All right, we will move to, I guess, comments, thank yous, whatever people feel appropriate to say. Since Leila said she had that first, I'll let her go first.
Well, thank you. And I would like to begin with a thank you to our community, our student staff, and the administration as well, for their continuous engagement through this redistricting process. This is a new process for us, and, and having served on three different redistricting committees as a volunteer, and then as a board member, I prefer this process. It was, thank you, Dr. Beresford, for bringing this to the attention of our school board, and for engaging cooperative strategies. We are very fortunate that we do live in a community that values our education and treasures each of our schools. Redistricting is not a simple process, but by using the objective data that was provided, the board criteria, and then the constructive feedback from the community, this preferred plan was created by cooperative strategies. I will say I'm very pleased that the additional choices have been added following the November 2020 Preferred Plan meeting. The board and community feedback clearly was heard, and these choices were provided. And I thank you for that. I feel this does address the several, several issues that many people have had with school capacity, and then the, the school distant concerns. So overall, I'm pleased that our schools are filled with children. They have children with laughter and learning, and I feel confident that our schools will be filled with children, laughter, and learning in 2021 as well. And with that, thank you, Mike, for providing the structure that we can all share our thoughts.
Thank you. Katie?
Thank you. And I appreciate you kind of letting us read a little bit, because there's a lot of, a lot of things going on. Our school community has undergone a significant and challenging journey this year to reach this point. I know that mentioning the rough year of 2020 is getting old, but I think not acknowledging our emotions are raw at this point would be a disservice. While we knew that there was a large redistricting coming, it doesn't make it less painful. One of the most beautiful things that I've seen in this experience is how much our families love their current school. So many comments started with, I love my school, I don't want to change. And it's hard when those people need to. As a school community, we are blessed to have strong elementary schools, middle schools, and an excellent high school filled with the best teachers and staff, and that isn't changing. For many of us, including myself, this is our first redistricting. And it's because of the forward-thinking approach of past administrators and school boards that have made sure that forethought and data were used so that this isn't a common occurrence. I am so thankful for the work of cooperative strategies, our administration, building leadership, and our community for their work and insight on getting us here. Redistricting certainly does not happen overnight, and it is a serious matter that demands serious consideration. Thank you to those who have participated in our focus groups and submitted comments via email or survey. Your input was extremely valuable. Our community is very involved, and many of your thoughts are now suggestions that have been put into our preferred plan. I am convinced that the critical work completed will yield positive outcomes for Carmel Clay students for years to come. Additionally, I am confident that as we as a community, we will, can now move forward together as one district. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, Lynn, do you have any comments? Pam?
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize to those who feel their comments fell on deaf ears, and were not given any consideration. I know that is not the case. I have read every comment made, whether through the survey or in emails to the board. As stated during discussion at the last board meeting, I have made small suggestions of my own to the preferred plan regarding the elementary and middle school boundaries. And as I continued to read the comments, I ended up accepting that this plan is one that meets all of our original criteria, especially being able to maintain the feeder system, and offer the new exceptions and choices for many of our students. For those who are concerned that two Title I schools will be attending Carmel Middle School, please know that that will be no different than it is currently, as C, as Carmel Ed, Elementary and Orchard Park are both attending Carmel Middle School at this point. I feel the staff at Carmel Middle School have been addressing the needs of all of our students for years, and I have every confidence that will continue. I am sorry that for some, the issue is a distance problem, and the time it will take to travel to a middle school. That is a legitimate concern, and one which I'm sure will be explored as the bus schedules are worked out. I also know that many students on the far west side of Carmel have the same concerns when traveling to one high school. All of our schools continue to offer an excellent, an excellent education to our students. Our number one guiding principle is that this school system is student-centered. I know the schools will do their best to help your child's transition to their new school be a very positive experience, and for the family as well. On a side note, I'm very excited for the two new schools opening in the fall. I know that Carmel Elementary families will love their new building, and those redistricted to Clay Center as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. This is not my, my first redistricting either. And I understand that change is hard, no matter what. And I understand, like Katie said, that this year it's extremely hard. One of my favorite stories about redistricting, the last time I had one of my law partners who was very adamant about the proposal, and how it was wrong for his, his family. And when they got to their new school, they loved their new school more than their old school. So I think it's fortunate to say that all of Carmel Elementary, all of Carmel schools are great. There is not a bad school to go to. I understand change is hard. And I also appreciate, we as board members have various expertises, and we rely on administrators and educators to give us that, their input. And so at the last board meeting, there was a lot of concern about middle schools, and I think it was the board's consensus that feeders was not as important as balance. And I have since understood that that is a hard transition, and it is made easier by going with your classmates. So I appreciate that being shared with us. And I will always defer to those that are experts in the field that they are experts in, and that I am not. And my job is to look out for all students, and do what's best for the district as a whole. So I again want to thank everybody that was involved in the process, from Matt and Roger, and all the administrators that took hours and hours of time to gather feedback, change the plan, to all those that participated in the process by giving their feedback. I know that not everybody will be happy, but I think that we did the best we could to come up with a plan that hopefully will last a long time, so that we don't have to do this. Because part of the goal of the last redistricting was to defer the redistricting as far out as possible. We were fortunate this time that we did not have to have a consideration that we're not going to move someone that was redistricted last year, or the year before, or two years before. So I know the goal is to balance out the schools, and have the boundaries last as long as they can. So with that, I will again open it up to the board for any other questions, or if Dr. Beresford, or Dr. Dudley, or Mr. McMichael would like to make any final comments before we vote. And I feel bad, Matt. I, Matt, I haven't heard you say anything, and I guess maybe that means you did your job before we got here. So thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for your assistance.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it, and, and all the input and involvement from the community. It's really been a great process.
Thank you. So now I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the proposed redistricting plan, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of a resolution for additional appropriation. It was the subject of the public hearing. It was the subject of the public hearing. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this is the action item necessary to actually approve the recommendation, and then we'll proceed to, if the board approves this, then we will... Okay, get closer to the mic. So this is the action item necessary to take the next step, to have the state approve our recommendation for additional, or our request for additional appropriation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding an additional appropriation of $1.9 million for the education fund? Thank you, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion or questions for Mr. McMichael? Katie?
I just wanted, it's just a comment. I just wanted to say a thank you, Roger, to all the work that you have and you continue to do to make sure that we as a district are in a financially good spot. I know that this year was definitely unforeseen by anybody, but because of the diligence and the fiscal responsibility of this district, we're able to do the things that we are. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the resolution for the additional appropriation, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next action item is approval of a resolution for transfer of funds to the rainy day fund. Again, Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is, again, just a resolution that gives us the authority to actually move funds from our operations fund to the rainy day fund.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for transfer of funds to the rainy day fund?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Leila. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. McMichael on this resolution? No. This is not the first time we've heard of this happening. So all in favor of approving the resolution for transfer of the funds to the rainy day fund, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have action item, a bid award for Carmel Claye Schools 2021 renovations. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is for work at Town Meadow Elementary School, Carmel High School, and Forestale Elementary School. The total recommended bid award is $1,842,950, and these projects are being funded from general obligation bonds.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bids for the indicated 2021 renovations?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Lynn, do we have any questions for Mr. McMichael on this? I'm sorry, go ahead, Pam.
Okay, I just have one question. Is the skylight at Forestale currently leaking? I mean, and how soon will we be replacing that?
I don't know that it's leaking right at the moment, but we've had enough trouble with it that we know we need to replace it, and so that will take place this summer.
So it's not leaking right now?
I don't, Ron shaking his head. He doesn't, I don't believe it is at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify the process that we go through for bid awards, that 50 bids were solicited with 13 responding, and the bid award recommendation is based on the lowest, most responsive, and most responsible bidder that met the specifications as recommended by the Skilman Corporation. That being said, if there's no more questions, all in favor of the bid award for the 2021 renovations, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the last action item is the 2021 CCS legislative statement in common interest. Leila?
Thank you, Mike. Yes, so we have the legislative letter that has been circulated at the board and with council to ensure that we've addressed the, our highlights in areas of common interest with our legislators. We've already had several meetings. They have gone very well, and I'm excited about our approach again. It was a very successful approach last year, and we're going to continue with that approach this upcoming year. Oh, I'm so sorry. We did not make, oh, much better. We did not make many changes. I know Pam had pointed out a few, and we reviewed those with Seamus, with KGR, and what you have before you is our final draft. So at this point, Mike?
So thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2021 CCS legislative statement in common interest in the form of the letter?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Do we have any questions for Leila?
I have a question. She can go first.
Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't remember if we put in 100% funding for virtual education or not. I forgot. And it's been a while since I read it, so I just want to make sure, because I know that that is something that ISBA is looking at this year as well.
Well, I know that specific language is not in there. That language is what Dr. Beresford and I have both addressed with our legislators. We know that, we know there isn't a lot of extra money floating around, and so the approach that we have taken is that we want to be sure that any additional statute that is going to be drafted by our legislators doesn't cost the districts any additional money beyond what we already spend.
Well, this would supposed to be from the state. This would be, because our students are now funded at 85% on virtual education, so we want to make sure that, because we're doing so much virtual education right now with COVID, that...
I will let Dr. Beresford address that, because it is my understanding that our legislator already took care of that. So, Dr. Beresford, if you'd like to chime in?
Yeah, in our conversations with legislators, we're very confident that they're going to fully fund school districts that have gone to virtual due to COVID-19. So we feel pretty confident that that's been reaffirmed over and over again.
Okay, whatever you said.
Thank you. Katie?
Well, first, real quick, I kind of, Pam, even though the language isn't in here, I kind of take it under the last bullet point of lessons learned from COVID-19 as like kind of the theme of it, of making sure that we have the correct funding and our needs and impact and all that kind of thing. So that's why, it's not in here, but that's kind of where I would categorize it.
Thank you.
My question is not necessarily about the letter, but, and I apologize for not asking before, it's mainly about the legislative. So I know that you work a lot with the state as far as priorities and stuff. Do you, and because it doesn't necessarily affect us with funding, but do you or Dr. Beresford, and I believe he has things, like city, like local, do you guys work at all, like the relationship with local government?
I don't specifically work with the city. I know Dr. Beresford and his entire team have ongoing conversations with regards to, I mean, anywhere from the SROs and our police department to the roads, and Mr. McMichael could certainly speak to that and Dr. Beresford. At one point, Dr. Beresford was having regular scheduled meetings and conversations with the mayor as well.
Yes, we both have occasion to, as you said, to either meet with the mayor and on it. We'll have a project coming up, for example, the issue of the roundabout at Main Street by the high school, and so we will be working very closely with the city and the city officials, using that as an example, as we did with the crossing from the stadium up to cross to go to the high school, up to the high school.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to jump a little more about, not necessarily the local, but also federal. Dr. Beresford and I, and Pam as well, this last year, we have, actually, let me backtrack, over the last two years, we have had a much stronger connection with our U.S. senators as well as our representatives, and we, in Carmel Claye Schools, have really built that relationship. And so they know when we call, and when there are specific areas that we can provide feedback, especially when it comes to special education, we have made every effort to engage our U.S. senators and representatives to ensure that Carmel Claye Schools is represented. And last year, when Pam and I were in Washington, D.C., well, actually, it was this year, it was just in January, while we won't be doing that this upcoming year, we had an opportunity to meet at their state office, or, not, meet at the Capitol Building and met with everybody, and that was a very positive, positive meetings, and I've continued with those interactions. Also, Seamus with KGR has a relationship with several as well, and so whenever there's an opportunity for us to provide some anecdotal situation that has happened here in Carmel Claye Schools, we have been able to have those conversations. So they have some feedback, and they understand what's going on here so they can advocate for us in Washington.
And I'm going to just piggyback on that, Leila, for a second. We have a new Congresswoman who was an Indiana legislator that we have a relationship with, and we have a U.S. senator that's a graduate of Carmel High School. So we continue to work on those relationships, and we wanted to be a trusted source when they have questions, and we want to be able to have dialogue when we have concerns. So I appreciate all the work that Leila and Dr. Beresford have done on this in developing those relationships. If there's no other comments, we'll now vote to approve the legislative statement in common interest. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we will move to discussion. The first item on discussion is the first reading of Policy 0122, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, I'm bringing to you for first reading is Policy 0122. This policy was reviewed by our policy committee as well as our attorneys at Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim, and there are some minor changes that both our attorneys and our policy committee are recommending to be made.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions or comments on that revised proposed policy? Not from the policy committee over here, no. Well, thank you. Next, we have the first reading of Policy 01222-02, nondiscrimination based upon genetic information of the employee. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, thank you. So this policy was also reviewed by our attorneys as well as the policy committee, and it is recommended that this policy be deleted. The information in this policy is covered in our Policy 0362, and we were advised to delete this policy so that we don't have conflicting information in any of our policies.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any questions from the board? No. Next, we will move to the first reading of Policy 0362, nondiscrimination and anti-harassment statement and policy.
Thank you. So these next two policies, this has been in the process with our policy committee for about two years. We started looking at these policies, and then we were advised to wait until the new Title IX regulations came out before we would revise them. And so finally, those did come out, and we have recommendations for changes to this policy from our attorneys, as well as our policy committee has reviewed these recommended changes. And this policy, 0362, is nondiscrimination and anti-harassment dealing with staff members.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? And you answered my question, the difference between this one and the next policy. This one is for staff, as opposed to, and I guess I should have known that, 0362, as opposed to 4362. So if there are no other questions, thank you. We will move to the next one, first reading of Policy 4362, nondiscrimination and anti-harassment statement and policy for students.
Yes, and so this policy is very similar to 0362. However, it has quite a few changes, because this is where the Title IX, the new regulations of Title IX come into play, and you'll notice all of those changes in red towards the end of that policy. So this policy, the recommended changes were made from our attorneys, looking at our Title IX regulations and the law, and reviewed by our policy committee, and there are several changes in the recommendations. And as I said, this policy does deal with nondiscrimination and anti-harassment dealing with students.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley, or I guess the policy committee on this policy? Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, these two policies took a lot of time, just want you to know. And the second one on Title IX, that was extensive and a lot of lawyeries in the policy, and so we had to reword some of it so that it's understandable. So just want you to know that was a lot of work.
Well, as always, I want to thank the policy committee for all of their work. We value the time you put in in keeping our policies current and up to date, and hopefully easy to find and easy to follow. That being said, if there's no more questions, we will move on to reports. The first report is student data report. Dr. Dudley, again?
Thank you. So this evening, I have a short report in reflection of 2020. I thought it would be a good time, as we look over the year of 2020, to reflect on the, maybe some of more positive things, because this year has been very trying, very serious trying times for our students, for our families, our teachers, and our entire community. And so, but there are some silver linings. So every cloud has a silver lining, and so it goes well, known saying, meaning, that good can be found in difficult or negative situations. The silver lining metaphor refers to the shining or the silver edge of a cloud when it's backlit from the sun or the moon. It's a message of hope. And these past nine months have been very devastating to our students, to our families, to our staff, to our community, to our country, and to our world. And as we reflect on these extremely trying times, we have found some silver linings that will help us to become even stronger as we recover from this pandemic. So in order to provide a seamless transition, as students move between in-person, hybrid, and virtual learning platforms, teachers and instructional coaches and administrators review curricula and identified essential standards and learning targets. This allowed the teachers to provide that focused instruction to our students based on these essential standards, and it also afforded the opportunity for our students to move between learning platforms without missing a beat. So that was a really positive piece of really focusing on the essentials. What is it that we really want to make sure that our students learn and are able to do as they leave, as they have the instruction this year, as they move on to instruction next year? And so this was a very, this was a silver lining that came out of our pandemic, and something that we will continue with as we focus on those essential standards, as we review our curricula, and as we develop new curricular pieces, really focusing on those essential standards and learning targets. The pandemic forced us to closely evaluate our instructional practices and to become more flexible in providing that just right instruction for each student. Our learning opportunities for students have become more personalized based on the student's individual needs. One example of this is our increased use of small group and one-on-one and one-on-one conferencing with students. Last week, I had the opportunity to observe a first grader. This was in a virtual classroom. The first grader was having a one-on-one reading conference with their teacher over Zoom. So the first grader independently logged into the Zoom conference and then proceeded to discuss the main ideas of the book that he was reading. And throughout the whole conference, he was so animated and so excited to interact with the teacher in this way. And it's so exciting to see our students getting that personalized learning. The teacher had the opportunity to ask questions, to do a teaching point, to move that learning forward for that student. And he really did not want to end the conference. He was very excited and kept trying to engage the teacher as she was moving, finishing up the conference on. So those improved differentiated learning practices are another silver learning. And we've always used those differentiated learning pieces. However, we wanted to make sure we've really refined those and made that learning more personalized for our students. Another silver lining is the intentional building of relationships and connections. And connecting with others has really been crucial for our students and our staff and our communities during this very difficult time. And our teachers and our administrators have been very intentional in helping our students and our staff build those relationships and those connections regardless of the learning platform. Regardless if the students are in person, if the students are in a hybrid learning platform or if the students are 100% virtual or if the students are switching back and forth. And we have had many students that have moved from different platforms and needed to build new relationships with their classmates. And we've been very intentional on that. And an outcome of those, that intentionality has been to an increased level of empathy between our students, between students among students, empathy with staff members, with other staff members, and also empathy with students and staff. And that growing in that empathy really makes, helps us to become better people altogether. And that's a life skill that is a silver lining that has come out of our pandemic here. So another silver lining has been the powerful integration of technology. Teachers and staff had a heightened sense of urgency as the pandemic took place, started back in March, to use that technology in very different ways. And we very quickly learned what worked, what didn't work, and we're still learning those pieces. We've been very intentional in how do we engage our students in that online learning platform? And how are we using technology to truly amplify the learning regardless of the learning platform? So regardless of whether the student is in person, hybrid or 100% virtual. We moved to a one-to-one devices with our students in kindergarten through eighth grade. That was something, as you'll recall, we've been working on for quite a few years. And it really created that urgency and it accelerated that movement that we have that one-to-one now in all of our kindergarten through eighth grade students. And then we still have a BYOD for our high school students as well. And then also, it really moved that integration of Canvas much more quickly. As you'll know, we've had Canvas for the last five years as a learning management system. And we have been training our teachers in implementing that. And this silver lining really accelerated that training and moved us forward much more quickly where we have the Canvas integration in all of our classrooms. Another silver lining is that increased collaboration. So it really, the pandemic has increased our reliance on others. People are leaning on each other to get the job done. Teachers are collaborating with other teachers in co-creating lessons, co-creating videos that they can use and implement into their Canvas lessons. Staff are collaborating each and every day to find solutions to very difficult problems. Our administrators are working more collaboratively than ever before to really solve those difficult problems and be able to do what we want, need to do for our students in our new reality. Also, our children, our students are collaborating with each other to move their learning forward as well. And they're learning different collaboration. Not only is that in-person collaboration, they're also collaborating through technology. So another silver lining that we have seen is the increase in innovative practices. Our staff and our students are using out-of-the-box thinking to try new practices and strategies and really moving outside of their comfort zone more than ever before and finding success. And from this success, they've newfound confidence in our teachers, our administrators, as well as our students to be doing things that they never thought possible before. And that is definitely a silver lining in our pandemic. Another silver lining is to have opportunities, a variety of opportunities for our students to be educated in multiple different platforms. And this includes our in-person platform, our hybrid, as well as our virtual. And we're so fortunate to be able to provide these different learning platforms to meet the needs of our students and our families and to continue to move the learning forward. And our students have also had the opportunity to move from one platform to another based on their individual and family needs. And if you would have asked me back in August, you know, how long might we be able to continue to offer in-person learning? I would have said at best, maybe fall break. And here we are at the end of our semester and we're still have the opportunity to offer that in-person learning. And that is, we're so fortunate to do that because as you can see, some of our surrounding communities don't have that opportunity right now. And so we're excited to be able to offer a variety of different opportunities based on the needs of our families in Carmel Clay Schools. Another silver lining through this pandemic has been that strengthened connection between the home-school connection. We've always had a very strong, positive relationship with our home, with our parents and our families and with, in the support of our families. However, this pandemic has really allowed us to strengthen that partnership and that connection. Through virtual learning, parents are getting firsthand glimpses of what teaching and learning looks like in many of our classrooms. And the support from our parents and our families has been just absolutely outstanding. And we'd never be able to do what we're doing this year and without their outstanding support. And we're just so thankful that we have that support. And the last silver lining that I'll touch on now is that resilience. And as you think about resilience, resilient is, at its root, means to rebound. And it's derived from the Latin word "celer", which means to leap or to jump. And it's, this understanding of resilience as something more than just bouncing back, as actually leaping into a new life. So our students, our staff, our families and our community has become more resilient over these past nine months. And this newfound resilience will allow our school community to do more than just bounce back, but to leap into educational opportunities that are even better in the future. So those are just a few of the silver linings to this very difficult times that we've had. And if that, I will have questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley. Questions from the board, Pam?
Yes, I know that we've learned a lot with the virtual education at this point. How do you see that being used in the future? Like for students' sick days, for snow days, various things that we might be implementing it?
Yes. And so, yes, we absolutely have learned quite a bit about engaging our students in virtual learning. So one piece that we will be looking forward to, and even this year yet, if we do have inclement weather, so if we might possibly have a snow day, rather than calling school off, we would have a virtual learning day where our students would be engaged in learning throughout the day. Our teachers would engage them and we wouldn't miss a day of school. So that'll be, that'll be a very positive outcome that we'll be able to implement, and we'll do that yet this year. We will continue, you know, we'll have to look at the possibility of, will we have some virtual options? What might that look like for extended absences, as you're talking about? Or what might that look like if we, do we have a virtual option for our students that fits their learning style much better? We'll have to really dig into that and to see. We do know, though, we have the capability of doing that. We have teachers that really understand how to engage our students in a virtual setting. And so that's a very positive piece. And so we can look at those different opportunities as a possibility.
For virtual learning, then, will, I know that some of that would have to take place as the teacher is in the building and is able to access her classroom. Will, will we give the teacher the opportunity to access her classroom from home? Because if they're home for a snow day and the students are home for a snow day, how will that work?
Yes. So for inclement weather days, so for a snow day, if the teacher would have the opportunity to go into their classroom if it's safe to travel and if they so choose. But for a snow day, the teacher also could stay at their home if they have the capability of offering that virtual learning on that snow day.
Have to basically know how to set that up prior to the snow day happening.
Correct. And our teachers already do know how to do that. That was, they were teaching from home last year, last March.
Thank you. And Katie?
I just want to share that. I mean, there's so many.
We'll come back to Lynn. I apologize.
You're missing her already. She's not even gone yet, Mike.
You're right.
I think one thing that I just want to, as a parent, to see that all the work that has gone into school in person to prepare in the event of, I have a fourth grader who at dinner likes to tell me, I put down my backpack in my cupcake and then I walk to my desk. I get a full play-by-play the whole day. And it's amazing to see like how Canvas is being integrated already in their in-person learning. And so that if we need to transition to a virtual environment, it is not going to be as obviously dramatic as it was in the spring. The teachers are already utilizing the technology and opportunities that it gives so that these kids do have a routine. And I also love how it's being utilized and balanced with writing and manipulables and all these different things that they can be able to do. I think it's a great, so I just wanted to, as a parent perspective, to say, I see that and I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done because I know it's been a long road.
Thank you. Lynn?
Thank you. Thank you for sharing the silver linings in this hybrid, in this virtual learning. As an educator, I have seen many of them in my own teaching practice. So what I see here, I just want to share a little bit of my experience. I can see that the pandemic and the virtual learning environment has put a lot of demand on educators' teaching of technical content. So it's not just about delivering the content. Now, you have to add on top of that empathy teaching, inclusive teaching, building relationship and so on. And also, I see that very often, we may assume that once we give the teachers abilities or resources to adapt to hybrid teaching or virtual teaching, the teacher will naturally lead the students in the learning environment. But we shouldn't forget that students will need training as well. And they will need to, the different skills, different resources to adapt to virtual learning. I just want to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila? Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley. And again, I think this is the perfect opportunity for me to thank our teachers, administrators and other staff for all that they do for our families. And as I started, the last few meetings that I've been here for, we are better together. Together, we achieve and we are the best at getting better. Also, I hope six months from now, two years from now, everybody remembers the value of teachers. We've talked about a lot that teachers are undervalued in our society in terms of respect and in terms of dollars. And we talked about last spring, how people felt that and saw that. And I hope going forward that we as a community and we as a state remember that and impart that upon our legislators that they are a valued resource and clearly in the past have been undervalued. And they have stepped up and the spotlight has been on them. And like I said at the beginning, not only did we really move to running two systems, we've got teachers that are running three systems. And while we have not been perfect, we've been getting better. We achieve more. And thank you for your report. Next, we will move to board member reports. Do we have a legislative update? Leila?
I do. And the update is, well, there's like four or five parts. So I will try to be speedy. It is after nine already. As reported, the General Assembly did reorganize November 11th. And it is anticipated that they'll start January 4th and potentially end on April the 29th. This is the long session, so this is our budget session. Not a lot of extra money, but we are hopeful that we will see some, perhaps just inflationary funds, but some increase in funding. One little caveat to all of the, the ending on April the 29th is that there might be a special session May of 2021. This is a redistricting year for the state. It happens every 10 years. And so for that reason, there might be a session. I've communicated with Dr. Bearsford and I believe Emily was, Emily Bauer was copied on it. We will update our website with our Appropriations Committee, all of the newly elected legislators that impact Carmel Clay Schools in any shape or form, as well as the committees for the Education Committee, the Appropriations Committee and what have you. Katie Jenner, Dr. Katie Jenner was appointed as Indiana's First Secretary of Education. She is currently serving as Governor Holcomb's Senior Education Advisor. This position was originally slated to start in 2025, but after Dr. McCormick chose not to run for reelection, the legislator expedited the position. And so on January 11th of 2021, Dr. Jenner will take office. I was able to attend the Legislative Action Network training. That was last Thursday. When was that? This time, it was actually recorded since it was virtual and it is available on the ISBA website. So anybody who'd like to go back and, and listen, they offered it at two different times, noon and 6:00 P.M. I was able to go to the evening, evening opportunity. Lots of really good information. Most of the communication strategies that they had suggested are ones that we have heard about before. They did highlight a potential new one. And that is really to have volunteers within our community who are interested in advocating for public education. And as through this redistricting process, we know that we have many, many, many families who are advocates for public education and love our schools. So we might want to explore having a network of families that would really like to be advocates on a greater level with our legislators should we need additional support for different bills that might be coming across. The, you know, speaking of teacher compensation, today, the Next Level Teacher Compensation Commission, which was established by Governor Holcomb about 18 months ago, today they released their 37 recommendations on what constitutes a competitive teacher compensation for the state of Indiana. The ISBA is hosting a webinar on the 16th. And there's still time. I'm registered to attend or to listen to that webinar. It's a, it's a question and answer session with both Mike Smith, who's the Commissioner Chairman, and Tim George, who's the Senior Policy Advisor to Governor Holcomb. That, ISBA is hosting that. You can still sign up. I know if you do not have the link, I'm happy to share that with you. I'm interested to hear what of those 37 recommendations are going to be on the legislative agenda for this budget session. And then there are some that are specific for, and I, to be honest with you, I've not read through all of them yet, but some are very specific for what we can do as a community. So I look forward to learning more and I will report back on that as well. One other neat opportunity for us, the Annual State House Meeting for, with ISBAs on Tuesday, February 9th. That's typically open to the legislative liaison for each of our boards. This year, because it will be virtual, it will be open to 500 people instead of just 100 people. So we are welcome. Think about the date of Tuesday, the 9th is available for you, February 9th. Think about the date of Tuesday, the 9th is available for you, February 9th. That'll be an option for us to attend that as well. And we will just move along as usual and get that letter out to all of our, all of our legislators who impact Carmel Clay Schools, as well as the chairman and vice chairs for the various committees as well. Thank you. Oh, any questions?
Thank you, Leila, for your report. Thank you, Leila and Dr. Bearsford, and all of our administrators for all the work they do in terms of legislative action. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? I just have a couple of comments. I mean, I think you've already hit on it. Like everything in our world today, this will be a very different session in terms of how they're set up and what they're doing. And like you said, they've got really two main goals this year. One is the budget, and two is their redistricting. So we don't, have no idea the length of the session. It may go much longer than we anticipated. I know that at this point, the House is planning on meeting in the Government Center, and the Senate is going to be in their chambers, spread out in the balcony. And like your comment about having families, I know that legislators like to hear from elected officials like us, and they like to hear from their constituents as opposed to just hearing from lobbyists. So I think that would be an exciting thing that we can develop, and I look forward to hearing more about that. So thank you. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. B.
And on behalf of Dr. Bearsford.
Dr. O'Stryke.
I will be reading the superintendent's report. And so we're going to start off with the holiday spectacular, Hometown Holiday premieres live on YouTube December 18th with four more repeat broadcasts throughout the weekend. I heard Pam before the meeting determining which broadcast she is going to watch. The live streaming is the only way to see the show, and it won't be available afterwards, so don't miss out. All the links for viewing are up on our social media platforms. And if you want to help out with some of those missing funds from ticket sales, there are also links to donate, or you can text the word SPEC, S-P-E-C, to 202-858-1233. We also want to give special shout-outs to all of our elementary and middle school students and staff who worked to create virtual options for holiday programs this year. If you haven't seen the amazing time-lapse video of Smokey Ro turning their music room into a green screen, you should check it out. We have seen some creative solutions with our virtual and in-person learners using Zoom. We had a number of families volunteer in various elementary schools to lead lessons about their holiday traditions, including Hanukkah. And many of our students have had surprise mystery readers appear via Zoom, as well as in-school zooming between fifth graders and our younger book buddies. Addie Arier won the Congressional App Challenge and was surprised by Congresswoman Susan Brooks with the distinction last Friday in class. Moving along, five CHS students have made it to the semifinals for the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation. Less than 2% of applicants have been selected as semifinalists, so congratulations. We want to congratulate Ria Arcara, Nimesh Bat, John V. Batia, Junfi Wu, and Grace Yu. As a reminder, the free meal waiver is extended for the remainder of the school year, so breakfast and lunches are free to all CCS students. We'd also like to thank the Carmel Youth Assistance Program Merciful Help Center and our CCS social workers and counselors who have coordinated and distributed 51,823 combined breakfast and lunch meals this semester with a virtual meal bag program. Our CHS esports won rocketly gold at the high school finals. They earned $3,000, three laptops, three gaming headsets, keyboards, monitors, and gaming chairs for their win. I believe they may be up to $10,000 in winnings this season. A special thank you to our coach and sponsor, Dylan Gentlecore. I watched his interview on Twitch, and he was outstanding and was very insightful into the world of esports and the different qualities such as leadership and communication that our students are learning as part of their esports team. Finally, before we get to the bell ringer, Whitney Miller teaches sixth grade math at Carmel Middle School. Whitney, yes, he has not missed a day of school in 10 years. Today, he was home quarantined due to an exposure on Saturday. This achievement is amazing, and I know he is probably pretty bummed about having to miss the week, so we wanted to send a special shout-out acknowledging his perfect attendance. And by the power vested in Dr. Bearsford, by everyone who vests any power in him, he declares Whitney's quarantine days do not count against his perfect attendance. And on to our bell ringer for the evening. She currently serves as Secretary for the Carmel Clay Schools Board. She cares about diverse perspectives in the community and always strives to make the best decisions for students. Lynn has been diligently working on the Board Policies Committee since 2018. She is also a board member on the Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation Board. What you may not know about Dr. Lynn Zing is that she is a Clinical Associate Professor of Accounting at the Kelly School of Business at IUPUI. Her areas of expertise include financial reporting and disclosure, international accounting, corporate governance, and firm performance. She has earned academic degrees from the following: a PhD from the University of Alabama in 2003, a Master of Accountancy from the University of Alabama in 2001, and a Bachelor of Economics at Zeeman University in 1997. She has worked as an auditor and financial analyst in China and became a Certified Public Accountant in Indiana in 2016. She earned International Distinguished Best Professional Paper awards, as well as being published in Socially Responsibility Journal, Quarterly Journal of Business and Economics, and the Journal of Contemporary Accounting and Economics. Lynn Zing has been an outstanding board member, serving the Carmel Clay community these past four years. As a professor of accounting at IUPUI, Lynn brought an eye for detail and exceptional wisdom to the board. We could always count on Lynn to ask the tough questions in decision-making, evaluating information, and holding the board and administration accountable. Her international background brought a wonderfully diverse perspective to our conversations, and most of all, Lynn has always kept students, all students, at the center of every decision. She has been an amazing leader for Carmel Clay Schools, and we will truly miss her. Let's take one more opportunity to recognize Dr. Lynn Zing. And finally, before I turn things over to President Kirshner, we want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe and healthy winter break. We are all thankful for getting the entire semester in both 100% virtual and also being here in person, educating our students and all of our staff and our families and students, working so incredibly hard during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke, for pitch-hitting there. We appreciate the hearing, and the bell ringer was truly a bell ringer. Thank you, Lynn. The last item we have on the agenda for this evening is announcements. December 21st through January 4th is winter break. January 4th is a teacher workday, no students. January 6th, students return. January 11th is school board reorganizational meeting, where we will welcome our newest board member and elect officers for the coming year. January 18th, there is no school for Martin Luther King Day. And January 25th is the school board regular session meeting. I will gladly take a motion to adjourn at 9:21. Thank you. Pam, second?
Second.
They're all looking at you, Lynn.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor? Aye? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.